Maybe not. Here he is, here's Jake Pearson. Good evening, welcome to Murray City Plan and Commission Meeting. We'll start the meeting at 6:34 PM. Murray City Plan and Commission Meeting for July 18th. We've got eight items on our agenda this evening. Before we start, I'd like to say a few things. Public may view the Murray City Planning Commission Meeting via a live stream at murraycitylive.com or at facebook.com/murraycityutah. You may submit comments via email at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Comments are limited to three minutes. Written comments will be read if we have any. I don't know if we have any yet. And if you have a cellphone, I'd ask you to turn it off while we're in our meeting. If you have a sidebar discussion, I'd ask that you take that outside in the hallway. And for those applicants, we'll ask you to come up to the podium and state your name and your address for the record when that agenda item is up. So with that, we have a quorum of commissioners this evening. Lisa Milkovich, Jake Pearson, Michael Henry, and that's it, myself Ned Hacker, I'm the vice chair. And this evening, we've got three commissioners that are excused. Michael Richards, Pete Hirtow, and Maren Patterson, the chair. And our staff this evening, Zachary Smallwood, David Rogers, Mustafa Al Janabi, and Mark Richardson, our deputy attorney. So with that, we'll start with the regular agenda items. Approval of our meeting minutes from June 6th. I ask all commissioners if you had opportunity to read those and if you had any comments or edits. And if not, I would take a motion to approve those.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the minutes from the June 6th, 2024 meeting as seen in our pre-meeting reports, my staff report.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Next agenda item, conflict of interest. Do any commissioners have a conflict of interest of any of the agenda items this evening?
No.
No, I do not either. And findings of fact, we have two findings of fact from RC Automotive and Erickson State Farm. Commissioners had opportunity to look at those and have any comments. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion for that item.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the RC Automotive and Erickson State Farm findings of facts as contained in our report.
All right, I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And our fourth agenda item is NA Automotive. And let's see, Mustafa is going to give us a staff report on it.
Thank you. So this is a-
Let me ask, is the applicant here for that item? Okay, we'll have you come up in a little bit, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, there you go. So this is an application for NA Auto, a conditional use permit to allow an auto sales business at location number 4195 South, 500 West, at shop number 18. As you can see, this is the site plan of the location. It is a very large lot and it is going to be located right over here, where that red light is. So the acreage of the place is 5.37, and the unit is 900 square foot. This is the zone of the place, which is an MG zone, general manufacturing, which would allow to have a dealership to be there as long as under conditional use. This is the site plan. It is a one shop divided into half. Number 18, as you can see, is the one that's being, the conditional use is being requested for. And as mentioned before, this is a 900 square foot unit size. Going forth, so parking, as you can see, highlighted in yellow, as is, there is, according to the applicant, there is seven parking spaces available. But according to the space provided and per our code, one spacer is required for every 750 square foot. With the 900 square foot, one space would be available while storing the rest of the place inside. An ADA needs to be recommended, but that would be under, as a new condition, especially going to be happening with the owner. With that being said, the findings, these are shown, the three findings that are shown based on the auto sales business and use number 5511 would allow to have a, in the general manufacturing zone, to have a sale, an auto sales business. With that, these are, staff does recommend the approval of this based on these four conditions. Questions, comments, concerns?
Any commissioners have any questions with the staff? All right, would applicant come forward, please, to the podium? If you could state your name and your address for the record, that would be desirable.
Ahla Abdulhadi.
The address is 4195-
You're gonna have to speak into the microphone a little bit closer.
4195 South, 500 West.
All right, have you had an opportunity to look at the conditions here on the screen?
Yes, we have.
And will you be able to comply with those?
Yes.
All right, do you have anything else to add to our staff report?
No, sir.
Okay. Staff have any questions or commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I guess I do. Is it unit 17 and 18?
17 and 18.
Okay, because I think in the drawing it was 17 and 18, it was just unclear.
Yeah, 17 and 18.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for us?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right.
I guess, not necessarily to the applicant, but amongst ourselves. I mean, we stated in the pre-meeting, stated in the report, that there needs to be an ADA parking spot. And so then the applicant knows they need to work with the owner to solve that problem. There has been, right, so you're aware of this, right? I just want to make sure, confirm that the applicant knows that there's required to have an ADA parking spot for this unit. And so you need to work with the, yourself and the owner need to work together to identify an ADA parking spot before this will be licensed by the department, right?
Perhaps the staff can help applicant out when they come and work with you.
Sure thing, yes.
We'll, yeah, we'll accommodate that, that's for sure.
Is that something that we want to put in here for the recommendations?
I would recommend putting a condition on stating that the property owner will need to work with staff to locate a dedicated ADA space for the building.
All right, good. Any other questions? Well, open this item up for a public hearing. And we'll give any of the audience or anybody online. And I'd ask staff if we've gotten any comments from anybody previously regarding this item?
We have not, no.
Okay.
Can I ask staff a question? Or did you worry, did you write that down, Jake or someone else?
I've got the wording right.
Perfect.
I have the wording right here.
Perfect.
So I think I could do it.
I didn't catch the wording, so great, thank you.
Okay, all right, we'll, seeing there's no public comment, we'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission for any additional comments or a motion.
Okay, I guess I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we, the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow an auto sales business at the property address 4195 South, 500 West, unit number 18, subject to conditions 1 through 4 with an additional condition that the applicant will work, the applicant and property owner will work with staff to determine an appropriate location for an ADA space.
All right, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion to second, any other comments?
Are we okay with that wording?
I like it, I guess, and is there any technicality we have to ask applicant that can have read and understand the conditions, or are we good? Since we added a condition.
You can ask them if you'd like. I don't think we have in the past when we added another condition. But it's, you're more than welcome to ask them if they're fine with that. Overall, I mean, what I would suggest, since we are adding that it's also the owner that's doing it, we're very well aware of the owner and work with the owner quite a bit, so. And this isn't a new condition either, it's been, it's been working on all of them.
All right, I have a motion to second. One additional condition was added to include an ADA space. Zach, can you or
Yeah.
Mustafa?
Roll.
Do a roll call vote?
Yep. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Hacker.
Yes, so congratulations, you have passed your conditional use permit for your NA Automotive. Congratulations, welcome to Murray. All right, agenda item number five, secured auto for conditional new use permit as well. And Mustafa, you're gonna do this as well?
Yes, sir.
Is the applicant here for that? All right, great, we'll have you up in just a little bit.
Okay, so this is the conditional use permit for a secured auto. It's a new auto service shop located at 4285 South State Street. Okay, so for this, this is located under, right on the edge of the city, located under a CD zone, which would allow to have this, but since it's doing an auto repair or auto service, you would require a conditional use permit. This would also cover the new site planner view application to create the new shop. So as is, this is a floor plan of the shop. It is a 93, 63 square foot with eight bay areas, which is highlighted in blue. Then in yellow, there's both restrooms and offices located there. For that parking access, so the access point would be located from both red circles there, or oval, one of them. This would be the main access point through this area, which would be on the north side of the property. This would be, parking space for the bays would be in yellow, as said, a needed requirement, as per calculations of staff, would be 29 parking spaces. The applicant provided 61, so staff has no issue with access points or parking. Landscaping, so there is a requirement for landscaping. It is 10 feet minimum on the rear or the east side on this case as a buffer due to they having a residential zone on that side. The applicant has provided 16% landscape, which the code does require 10%, so the applicant has provided that and covered it over. The fence is six feet high and it could go up to eight feet per the approval of Planning Commission. Again, this is the building detail of the floor plan. So it is a one-story floor plan and offices and bay area. And as explained before, it will be a shared entrance with tenants and spaces restroom through that yellow area elevation. This is a 20-foot tall elevation. Per code, 35 is what's required and the applicant has provided 20 feet. Based on that, they propose to use for the auto repair and service businesses and the new building construction under land use code of 6410 should be allowed under conditional use. And these would be the findings. Based on that, staff does recommend the approval of this property based on these 10 conditions. Comments, concerns, questions?
Any commissioners have questions for staff?
Mustafa, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can you go back to the picture of the layout of the bays? So in that layout, if I count it, I count 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 across the top, 5, there's 10 spaces, there's eight lifts. And then the letter from the applicant says a nine bay, and our report says eight bays, so help me figure out which numbers, our number we're working with.
I believe that according to the applicant, it's supposed to be eight, correct? Unless I'm being wrong, so you can correct me if that's the case.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eight lifts, so that means eight working bays, okay. All right, so I guess the two extra spaces are room to maneuver cars or equipment around?
Yeah, the one would be entrance.
Here, what I, when you come up and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Joe Watson, 4339 South State Street.
Commissioner Milkovich.
Yeah, the, on the lower right there, that's gonna be the access through the building. The other one will be just like a storage area.
So eight functional bays, okay, that answers the question, thank you.
Do you, stay up here. Do you have anything else to add to the staff report?
No, I did have questions about two of the conditions. But we can address that after you, you can hit me with any questions you have first.
No, that's, you ask your questions.
Okay, so the only two questions we had was number seven with the dumpster enclosure. We currently have a dumpster enclosure at our building that's in the adjacent lot now and would request that we don't have to have two on the same lot.
We'll have to ask staff about that.
That is correct, it'll be a shared dumpster between the two lots, but it is part of the conditions to have that.
So, I'll just interrupt. It was just indicated, so if you go to the site plan, Mustafa, please. And then if you highlight just at the opposite end of that, right, yep, just to the left. So it was just shown on the site plan that there would be a dumpster on, at the, for RC and secured. If you just go up just a smidge, right there.
Right.
Yeah, so, so the details of that weren't provided. So we're saying if there's going to be a shared dumpster, just when you're building the building, this was just a carbon copy condition from RC. So if it's, if you are doing one, you have to comply and provide details on that. That's all that's really, that condition is stating. So if you are providing one, if you do one on RC and they're shared, great, you don't need to do it on this one because it's already built.
Okay, yeah.
And you're saying you already have a dumpster, it's already enclosed?
Yeah, so RC will have one on their site that they'll do the enclosure. We already have one by our sales building that's enclosed, so we'll just use that for our building.
And your other condition, you have questions about?
The other one was regarding the fence, the wall. There's been talk of, like it says there, the six to eight-foot masonry fence. We've been talking with a gentleman named Ed Smith. He's kind of the designated spokesperson for the residential area that's behind us to get some of their input at the recommendation of the city to kind of get their thoughts on it. But bounce some ideas off of him. Our preference would be, because of the amount of slope in that 20-foot utility easement that'll be behind the building, because of the amount of slope there, we would request instead of a six-foot masonry fence, we'd like to put a six-foot concrete retaining wall with a six-foot chain link fence on top of that. That will create actually a 12-foot divider between us and the residential area. There was, I can't remember who I talked to, the city that was a little worried that might not be favorable for the residents back there. They love the idea to have a taller, bigger divider. So the retaining wall facade would face the residents, is that correct? Correct, so they'd have a six-foot concrete wall with a six-foot chain link fence on top of that. That allows us to kind of take out some of that slope in that area, make it a little bit less- What does a chain link fence allow someone to just go walk and look down into someone's backyard, though? We would match the chain link fence that's on the front side of the property now that has the black privacy panels in it. So you can't see through the fence.
I have questions too, because I think the cement fence is meant for privacy and longevity and maintenance and the appeal of it versus a chain link fence. I wish we had the property's owners here to speak for themselves.
It was my understanding when the previous applicant for the north end of this parcel was here that there was a, already some kind of retaining wall or something there, is that not correct?
Not on the east side, no. There is on the north side between the property, the other applicant between their property and the canal there, but there's nothing on the, all there is right now is a dilapidated old wooden fence between us and that trailer park right now. So it'll be a huge improvement over what they have now.
Any other thoughts? Any other thoughts?
I am concerned about even with a chain link fence that has slats in it, you still could go look through that fence directly down onto the property.
But they, they're only required right now to have a six-foot fence, so if they could have a-
No, you're right.
Six-foot retaining wall.
But people can't walk on top of a fence normally.
I can, I can probably solve this pretty quickly.
Yes.
So in the code specifically, it actually states that it has to be a six-foot high solid masonry fence. So they, this body does not have the ability to vary from that, from that code.
Okay.
So we would have to go a different route, which we can talk about offline. But as far as the code is concerned, it's, it's required to be six-foot solid masonry.
Okay, and I guess that's sort of the question, and then we can, we can chat about this more.
Yeah. It comes into like variance territory.
Yeah, okay.
Which this isn't the body that grants variances, so.
Okay.
Really what this, what this condition is, sorry, I'm now winded, running back and forth. What this condition was is to, the six-foot high fence is the requirement and this is just allowing you to go up to the eight-foot. So that was just giving you an exception for two additional feet if needed.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Which would be in addition to the retaining wall that you were talking about.
Yeah.
So Zach, just since we're talking about this and then, so it's the zone that requires the masonry fence between this and a buffer between the residential zone, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, in a situation like this, if they're putting a retaining wall in, I assume they're going to, their level of their property is going to be at least partway up that, correct?
Correct, on the-
On the entire six feet, or what?
Probably not the entire six feet, but the slope decreases as you go along the property line, so it wouldn't be to the top of that on most of it.
So they would at a minimum have to go six feet above grade and could go up to eight feet above grade?
Correct.
And it sounds like the residents would prefer the eight feet, if that's their only choices.
Yeah, so the retaining wall wouldn't be like the fence, so they would do the six foot. So it would get them that 12 total, I guess, because the retaining wall wouldn't be, we don't consider that a fence. So it, they could go from, from 12 to 14.
From the residential side.
Yeah, but it'd only be six on their side.
I mean, you can see how a resident may not want 12-foot masonry behemoth be in their backyard. So, but the only way you're saying that we could possibly get around that is a variance.
Yeah, we would have to go through the variance process.
We couldn't, but a variance could get around that.
And if we're talking just now theoretically, you've got to get a variance, the applicant goes for the variance. But if we're doing it to benefit the six neighbors who don't want the 12-foot high wall, do we ask the 12 neighbors? Because what if one neighbor says, I don't want it, and we feel like all 12 don't? I mean, just, you would think you want some regulation, which we talk to each other.
Wouldn't they be notified with the variance when the variance happens?
They would be notified with the variance as well, yep.
That'd be great.
All right, do we totally confuse you?
Nope, no, I hope I didn't make it more confusing than it needed to be.
So my question is, you had opportunity to read all of these conditions and you can comply with them. So we talked about dumpster number eight, I would say, continue to stay in contact with the staff and determine if a variance is desired by you to the city and/or go with what's here.
Okay.
So if we approve it tonight, it has to be with this condition?
Well, we could take, we could take the condition out, but he's already required to make, do a six-foot masonry fence. So all we're doing with this condition is allowing him to go up to eight.
So if you remove the condition, he's still is required to do six, yeah.
This is just in the code, it says that the Planning Commission can allow it to an eight-foot fence. And so this condition is just allowing him to go six or eight.
Correct, all right. Any other questions?
Sir, my question is, do you think there's an issue with eight-foot fence? Would you rather take that out? Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
Oh, no.
Okay, okay.
I'm just wondering, I want to make sure I understand how we're gonna handle it, if we're gonna leave that condition in or-
Yes, there's still an eight-foot, there's still an eight-foot masonry wall required.
Right.
Six to eight.
So we have the option of doing either six or eight, yeah, okay.
And that, the rest of the irritating, there's just a small little clerical error. There's just two items numbered one, and in our packet, it's numbered correctly. Right, we all know which one we're referring to in the discussion.
So there's 11 conditions, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion?
Just one more question for you. Do you, where do you anticipate the primary access to this building will be?
The primary access will probably be from the south side, the same side as the dealership. The larger circle there.
Is there residents, is there a residential area to the south of that, there's the trailer homes?
Yes, to the south, but directly north of that is our current dealership.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna open this up for public comment. Anyone in the audience like to comment regarding this item? Zach, do we have any, or Mustafa, do we have any comments that have been called in or written in?
I'm afraid not, there's nothing.
Since it went out, okay. Could wait for another 20 seconds and but we won't, all right, we're gonna close this for public comment. Bring it back to the staff and the commission for any additional comments or I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission approve the site plan and conditional use permit to allow the construction and operation of automobile repair and service business at the property address 4339 South State Street.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Excuse me, subject to the- Excuse me, subject to the commission's statement as well.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion to second. Any additional comments? All right, can we do a name vote?
Yes. Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Hacker.
Yes. Congratulations. We got through it. Stay in touch with the, the staff and, and shouldn't be as complicated as I think we probably made it. All right, thank you. All right, item number six, general plan, zone map amendment. Is applicant here for that? All right, thank you. We'll have you up in just a little bit. And David, you going to do staff report?
Yep, I'm, so Agenda Item Six is a zone map amendment located at 323 East Winchester Street. The applicant is requesting a zone map amendment of a parcel that currently has a single-family home from the R18 low-density residential zone to the RNB residential neighborhood business zone. This zone change is to facilitate future development at the site that allows for land uses that are comparable to several other adjacent parcels in the area. And along with that, this zone change will bring the parcel zoning in line with the future land use map from the Murray City General Plan. So here we have what the current zoning looks like. It is in the R18 zone. It's 0.34 acres. And then we have the future land use map, which shows that this whole area here is planned to be residential business. So we have here some of the differences between the zones. There is residential permitted on this zone. It's still an 8,000 square foot lot size for single-family, 10,000 square foot minimum for a duplex. The heights are lower in the RNB zone, 20 feet normally, but can go to 30 feet with planning commission approval. The setbacks are a little bit smaller in the RNB zone than they are in the R18 zone, 20 feet front compared to 25, 20 feet rear compared to 25, eight side yards. And then the corner setback is the same. The parking for a residential use would be the same as it would be in R18. And then there would be four stalls per thousand square foot of net usable building area for a commercial building. So 24 notices were sent out to residents within, or to any afflicted entities within 300 feet of the property. Staff received two phone calls and an email. The calls were about, one call was about asking, clarifying questions about the zone change, and the other was voice, voiced opposition to this change. So as our findings, the general plan provides for flexibility in, in the implementation and execution of the goals and policies based on different circumstances. The proposed zone map amendment from R18 to RNB has been considered based on the characteristics of the site in the area. The potential impacts of this change can be managed within the densities and uses allowed by the proposed zoning. And the proposed zone map amendment from R18 to RNB conforms to the goals and objectives of the Murray City General Plan and will permit the appropriate use of the subject property. So with all of that, staff recommends the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested zone map amendment. And I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Do you, do you know what the, just the frontage length is on this lot?
I don't.
Any other questions for the staff?
I'm going to make an assumption, but this is just an assumption, that it's about 55.72 feet. Just based on the, just based on the legal description. Yeah, I, I, I think that's what it is because I don't see another one that's small enough. So it's either 64.25 or 55.72, probably the 64. If you look at the, the map, it kind of looks like.
Perhaps the applicant knows.
Yeah, maybe.
Any other questions for staff? All right, applicant come forward, please, and state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, Andrew Allman, 307 East Winchester, I think it's sometimes called 6345 South 30th.
And have you been able to review, oh, I guess we don't have any conditions, do we? No.
Nope.
Do you have any other additions for staff report?
Well done on that size, Zach. That's, that's pretty good.
Do you know the width of your property?
Just that the property is, it's within the 2017 plan and, and future use plan, so. Hopefully it, it helps and is a good thing for the neighborhood.
Any questions for applicant? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional comments? All right, I'll open this item up for public hearing. And I think we had one written in comment, did we not? Is anybody in the audience here going to comment? Would you like to come up and comment? If you would, please state your name and, and address for the record.
My name's Karen Thorne, and I live at 315 East, 6340 South. So I did receive notice on this. Have spoken with several neighbors who were planning to attend tonight as well. I'm, I'm new to this, so I'm still a little bit confused about what is being approved for the RNB for this property. And I did not receive notice on the property to the west that maybe was discussed a meeting or two ago. You, and, and on that property currently is a large cluster of trees, so a lot of greenery as you enter the neighborhood. The neighborhood, you know, has been there since the 1960s, so, you know, going through a vast amount of change on the entrance to the neighborhood is definitely concerning for all the neighbors. So, so, yes.
Okay. Do you want some more explanation of what we're looking at this evening?
Yes.
Okay. We'll do that. We're going to do a public, we're going to finish public comment, and then we'll answer those questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, what, what was your address? You said 315 East?
Yes.
Would you like to read comments into the record?
So the email that we received is from Karen. I'm happy to read the email, but it was, it was from Karen. She, she emailed us. So the email says, first of all, I never received notice about the property at 313 East Winchester that is even closer to my home than the one I did receive notice on, 323 East, which is the one we're discussing tonight. Having received this notice, I was talking with a neighbor who did receive the notice on 313 East Winchester and shared it with me. I am hoping that initiative did not pass, and it is open for consideration. My comments are as such. This is our neighborhood. We do not want a parking lot at the entrance to our neighborhood. It is bad enough we have this awful power plant to look at and drive past, but a parking lot will greatly reduce the aesthetics of coming into our neighborhood. I understand it is likely there will be development on Winchester, but please don't allow a parking lot where there are currently a bunch of old-growth trees. That would not be in keeping with Murray's motto, Tree City. Furthermore, do they really need such a large parking lot? Where's the green space? Where's the landscaping plan? Again, this is the edge of the neighborhood here. I would like to be made aware of any future planning on this lot. I will be at the meeting regarding 313 East. Thank you, Karen Thorne, 315 East, 6340 South.
Okay, great. Do we have any other comments?
We did not.
All right, I will close public comment period and ask the staff if you could go over, I guess, the allowable land uses for the RNB, perhaps even the R18. So we're changing it from R18, which is a residential, single-family, low-density zoning to a RNB residential neighborhood business zone. And David, if you had talked to the land uses that with this zone change would be allowed.
And David and Mr. Chair, can we maybe also request the staff, I feel like we all were involved in the process of adding RNB to the zoning codes and the intent of that zone. It would be nice if maybe you could share that with the public as well.
Yep, good, good comment.
Yeah, absolutely. So tonight, what we are discussing is the rezone of the property highlighted in light blue right there. And so that is changing it from a single-family residential zone, which is what the R18 zone, it means a residential zone that has the minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet for single-family homes. And we are changing it to, or the proposed change is to the RNB, which is the residential neighborhood business zone.
Which is, which is the zone right next to it.
Correct.
To the west.
Yep, that is that zone in light pink.
The purple zones and, and the two other zones to the east.
Yes. And so this is the zoning map. We also have, every city has a general plan that has a future land use map for how the city would like to see properties develop in the future. And the future land use map shows this area as residential business. So this zone change would bring the zone into harmony with the city's general plan future land use map. So the residential neighborhood business zone does allow for residential. It allows for single-family dwellings, as well as a two-family dwelling such as a duplex. Some of the other permitted uses in the RNB zone include residential facilities for persons with a disability or the elderly, utilities, travel agencies, florists, optical goods or eyeglasses, insurance carriers, agents, brokers and services, real estate and related services, portrait photography, beauty and barber services, physicians, physicians' offices, dental offices, other medical, paramedical or health services, legal services, engineering or architectural firms, accounting and bookkeeping firms, art and design studios, business and management consulting services, art, drama or music schools, along with dancing schools. And then, so those are the permitted uses that are allowed by right in this zone. There are also conditional uses that would need to come before this body before they would be permitted. And those would include a bed and breakfast, a delicatessen, a health food or lunch facilities, an antique store, books, stationery, art and hobby supplies, a gift shop or boutique, banking or credit union services, a tanning salon or massage salon, dental laboratory services, schools of any kind, kindergarten through senior high school, childcare facility, churches, synagogues, temples, missions, business associations, professional membership organizations, political and civic organizations, or nonprofit organizations. And the idea behind the residential neighborhood business zone is to act as a buffer between heavier commercial uses and residential. So as you can see here across the street on Winchester, we have some heavier uses. We have, we have a restaurant there, we have office space. And so the idea for this zone is to act as a buffer between the busier Winchester street that has more commercial on it and the single-family residences that occur further north.
And Mr. Rogers, part of that buffering effect is the setbacks are different and the heights are a little bit different and the aesthetics of the building, requirements of the aesthetics are a little bit different as well. Is that correct?
Yes, that's all correct. The, the uses and the setbacks, all of that is less intense in this zone than it would be in the general office zone across the street. And the residential neighborhood business zone has different standards that need to be met to include the different neighborhood character to make it more similar to housing than other commercial requirements we have, that, that we have in the city. And planning commission reviews those to make sure that they are found to be harmonious with the intent of the zone.
And then an example of the zone is over by Wheeler Farm, right?
Yeah, there are several properties that already exist along Winchester and along 9th East, across the street there from Wheeler Farm that show different pitched roofs and different other design elements to make them more harmonious with the surrounding single-family homes.
Does that help you? Do you have any other questions? If you do, you have to come to the podium. But you don't have to state your name again.
Along the same concerns she had, though, I noticed here in your, this box, you've got, it says objective, tan promoted a transition, the development patterns between commercial areas and stable residential neighborhoods, and it specifically talks about tree buffering. How would that affect the use of this lot? Would they have to leave a tree buffer in the back?
So, and I'll just speak to that real quickly. I, I want to make sure that we're on, so I think the, the specific, I apologize, I'm losing my mind tonight. The specific item she was speaking about with the trees is regarding the Erickson State Farm to the, to the, on the property to, to the west, where it does have a lot of old-growth trees. That was on that, our last planning commission. It, it, it's not the growth, the, the trees on this property per se. And I, I don't mean to put words in your mouth. If I'm speaking incorrectly, let me know.
What's this right here?
I think, tell me if I'm wrong, I'm sorry, we're, but the fact of the matter is, if, unless I'm incorrect, and someone can correct me, but it doesn't matter if that property is on the corner was zoned R18 or RNB, if the property owner wants to cut down the tree, he can cut down the tree. There are, there are requirements, especially if they come with a business license. Is that correct, Zach? That they would have to have some type of landscaping.
Yeah, that's correct, but I, I do caution just that I, I don't want to get in, I don't want us to get into a conversation about a, a prior application. As that's already been kind of decided.
Yeah, I'm just saying, on this property, I mean, on any property, the property owner can cut down an old tree if they want. There's nothing stopping any property owner, no matter what the zone, unless, I don't know, maybe there's some protected tree, but I don't think any, anything the city can do can stop somebody from cutting down a tree on their property, unfortunately.
And I guess I still go back to my question on this property is what's stated here on these objectives, is there anything in the
No.
Process of what this would be used for that goes back to this objective to create a buffer?
There's landscaping requirements in, within the zone. But again, it doesn't ensure that any existing tree will stay.
Well, not the existing tree, but I mean, there's still, the objective is to create a buffer.
When this body reviewed the advocates off 7th East, I believe there was a, a tree buffer along that north side. So in any future development, that could be something that comes up. But at this moment, no, we, we couldn't like condition that they have tree buffer along that north side or anything. You're, you're purely looking at just the, the zoning of the property at this, at this time. But in the future, when, if and when this, this zoning gets approved with the city council, and Mr. Allman goes forward with any developmental plans in the future, we can work together prior to his application submittal. And he's obviously here listening to this conversation now, so he can take that into consideration while, when making some of those.
Well, I guess that's what I'm asking. Can that, can that be a condition when he comes back in? And then the only reason he would come back in is he had a conditional use.
It depends what he uses the property for. He may not have to come back.
Yeah, it, it kind of depends. It, it's.
Well.
It's neither here nor there at this point.
Doesn't necessarily have to.
Correct.
To conform to these conditions.
Well, we got no conditions.
Well, I think too, the objective here, this box right here, is a snippet, tell me if I'm wrong, from our general plan.
That's correct.
This is not code. This is just telling us, we came up with a general plan, and then we, then we tried to make code or zones to, to do this, but none of this, none of this wording in this thing is actually in our code necessarily.
Oh, yeah, yeah. This is a strategy. So this is stuff that the, that staff should work on, is what it's saying. Is adopting more detailed and specific landscape and tree requirements. That's, that's not a requirement at this time. We do have landscaping and buffering requirements already in the RNB zone, but it's something that we could look at into the future as a text amendment.
All right, we're moving ahead. Did you get your answer?
I, I appreciate all your attention and concern to the buffer areas. I, I, I guess my other question is, you're still going to address what is being requested to be, the, the space to be used for?
No.
You're still going to go over the site plan and so on, like in the other?
No, this will go to the city council. We're going to, we're going to probably make a recommendation, well, we'll make a recommendation to the city council. The city council will decide if this goes through as a zoning change. And then it's the applicant's desire.
Yeah, I think it's important to understand why we do it that way. We do it that way because once we make a zone change, if he tells us he's going to build a bed and breakfast there, he doesn't have to build a bread and breakfast. He can do anything. he doesn't have to build a bread and breakfast. He can do anything that that zone change allows. So that's why we don't look at what he may or may not do. Because when we approve it, we've all sudden given, giving them permission to do anything the zone allows. And that, so that's why there's no site plan or what, what's going to happen or not happen. Because the decision we make here today is applicable for tomorrow and in 10 years and plans change. And so that's why we don't look at particulars. We need to look at, is it appropriate for this property to be an R and B and yes or no? Does that make sense?
Yes.
He can't do anything he wants.
And can I also ask, is the property to the east owned by the same person? Developer?
I'm not sure we understand your question.
The property to the east, one box to the east, so you got purple, purple, and you got the two green in the middle. Is that also owned by the same developer person?
He's shaking his head no.
Are you planning to buy that property? Okay, that's the questions I have for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Good discussion. All right, hopefully there's no more, so I will ask for, or I will entertain a motion. And as I said, this is to forward to the city council.
I'll make a motion that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendment to the zoning map designation of the property located at three, two, three East Winchester from R one eight, single family, low density residential to R and B residential neighborhood business as described in the staff report.
All right, yep, a motion?
I'll second.
A second, any other discussion? And I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Okay, I'll do the roll call. Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that. Good luck in the future and thank you for good discussion on clarifying what the commission is doing. Thank you very much. All right, agenda item number seven. Accessory dwelling unit text amendment. This is from the, the staff to the planning commission, and this would be a potential forwarding a recommendation to the city council. All right.
Perfect. Yeah, this is a request from staff to update this, some language in the ADU ordinance, which is chapter seventeen dot seven eight of the land use ordinance. Specifically, so a lot, there's some text in there that's just cleanup, but, and, but the majority of it is reference modifications to the detached ADU standards. So in our modern income housing plan, which is required by the state, the strategy, we were required to adopt five strategies. One of those was to create or allow for and reduce regulations related to internal or detached accessory dwelling units in residential zones. And our action plan was to review by December thirty first of twenty twenty three, the ADU regulations and, and determine whether those, one of, those three things apply. Whether a second ADU should be located on residential properties, review of setback requirements for detached ADUs, and consider allowing a second level for appropriately located accessory structures when the second story would be used as an ADU. So specifically, we're going to be talking about the second bullet, which is setback requirements for detached ADUs. We did do a preliminary review back before December thirty first of twenty twenty three. And if you'll remember, we came forward, we actually received an application. The city received an application to reduce the size of detached ADUs from twelve thousand square feet to ten thousand square feet. That was approved by the city council. And, and so we've been kind of watching that over the past year, how that's affected things. And we've received four out of, I believe, I think I wrote, I think it was twenty, twenty-four? Yeah, something like that. Of our total accessory dwelling unit applications, about four of those were for detached ADUs. So the state, even though we say that the action plan that this will be completed by December thirty first, twenty twenty three, we still have to report every year on changes and still keep working towards implementing more of these, these items. So that's why we're here today. First one I'll, I'll touch on is for proposed changes for attached and detached ADUs. There was language in there about no entrance to an ADU would be allowed in a corner side yard area. We are proposing to remove that language. As I've been driving through the city for a number of years, I, I always see people's, all of these are from Google Earth, pictures taken of people's doors that are in the corner side yard. You wouldn't know if one of these was an ADU or not. Typically, ADUs don't have those, a distinct look or, or change from just a regular door, much like these. So I, I am recommending that we remove that language from both the attached and detached ADUs.
Can I ask a question just while you're going through there?
Of course.
So we don't have to go back. So right now, they can't have it on a corner lot, so the front door is offset from the sidewalk or the road. Or if we really allow them on a corner lot, then won't the front door be right next to the road possibly? Or am I misunderstanding that?
No, it wouldn't be allowed, so you would still have the setback, right?
Isn't the setback much smaller than the front setback?
It's twenty feet. The corner side yard is, is twenty feet.
For the ADU?
For everything.
For everything, including the ADU?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Say it again, I mean, different residential zones have different side setbacks. Some have twenty with a minimum of eight on one side.
That's for interior. Those are for interior side yard. Yeah, corner lots are, are always twenty feet. Almost writ large, every zone, commercial, residential, all of them have that twenty foot corner side yard.
Thank you.
Excuse me. So that's the main change there. There were some red lines cleaning up the language. I personally don't like. I, I don't remember exactly what it's called, but it's like prohibitive language. I, I like permissible language. So instead of you like, in no case shall you do this. I, I prefer to say, you shall do this instead. So like, in no case shall you have less than ten feet of, of setback. That just gets confusing for a layperson. I prefer just to say, you shall have ten feet of setback. So there are a couple red lines in there where I've changed that, that language, but it's not a substantive change. The next comes with detached accessory dwelling units currently. So the, the request of change is to increase the allowable area from up to fifty percent of the main dwelling, up from forty percent to a max of a thousand square feet. So all we're doing is allowing those smaller homes to have a greater percentage. We're still capping it at no more than a thousand square feet. We're just allowing, because there are a lot of smaller homes in Murray that can't get something very reasonable if you're doing it forty percent. So this is an incremental change, but it's also an industry standard. City standards pretty much across the board are doing about fifty percent. Next one, so you'll see that I actually, and these are actually scaled appropriately too. These boxes actually relate to forty percent or fifty percent scale between the two here. Also recommending a reduction in the parking requirement to match the attached ADU standards of one additional space instead of two additional spaces that are required currently. We, since we've adopted that one additional space back, I believe in twenty twenty-one, we've not seen an impact to this date. We still have not received a complaint from somebody that has gotten a permissible accessory dwelling unit. We don't see parking problems. We don't see parking complaints. So long as that they've gone through the, the, the actual permitting process that we have. Next is reducing, this is the big one, reducing the setbacks from fif, between fifteen and twenty-five to ten feet on the rear. And increased the setbacks from eight feet to ten feet on the side. So this was just for ease of, ease of use for the ten, increasing the setback on the side. Currently, how it reads for the rear yard though, is that it needs to meet the same setbacks as a single family dwelling. So on houses that were built pre nineteen eighty-seven, they had a fifteen foot rear yard setback. Anything post nineteen eighty-seven has a twenty-five foot rear yard setback in almost all the zones. And so, go ahead.
Well, maybe you're going to get to it. My question's about the side setback.
Okay.
Why are you increasing that from eight to ten?
So typically, it mostly, like I said, just for ease of use. So all setbacks for an ADU will be ten feet from the back end side. If, if you feel like keeping that at eight feet or to the regular, to the requirements of a single family dwelling, that's fine too.
Can you just for understanding, expand that again? So ease of use, because one, I'm not sure. Tell me how it makes it easier to use it when it's ten feet from the sideline, because I'm assuming it's precursory for all neighbors. All neighbors can know they'll be ten foot from the accessory dwelling. Or is it for the person using the dwelling, it's easier to get your wheelbarrow back?
It was just being able to, so when somebody wants to design something, it's easier just to say it's ten feet from here, ten feet from here.
Easier.
That's it. That, that's all I was thinking. It can be reduced. It can stay at that eight feet. But that, that, that's entirely up to the commission.
So I understand the ease of math.
Yeah.
But then it makes me think, I don't know if this applies, this question. Yard sizes are reducing in size. We're allowing smaller lots, we're allowing more R one sixes, R one eights, R one becoming more popular.
No, this will not.
How does that affect, how can, is it harder to put accessory dwelling on R one six because of this requirement? Or we only have one R one?
So we're not changing the lot size requirement at this time. So they will still be required to have a ten thousand square foot lot in order to do a detached accessory dwelling unit. So there won't be any sixes or eights at this time.
I guess the only thing I was looking at on that side setback is you allow the, the main structure to be eight feet. Seems inconsistent to me to make, if we're going to allow ADUs, that they need more than that.
I see what you're saying. If, if it's twenty feet with eight, a minimum of eight on one side, it would make sense for the accessory dwelling to have the same.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's totally fine. I just went for the ten and ten. That seems to be pretty standard across the cities are ten and ten, but if, if you're comfortable with eight.
Well, is the eight foot setback for a primary structure standard?
I don't know. I haven't done that research.
So, so maybe I, maybe I missed this. What, what's the current setback for the primary residence? Do you know that?
On the sides? Yeah, so. For, but we'll, we'll just go for the benefit of the doubt in an R one ten and R one twelve zone. It would be eight on one side and then, let me rephrase that. I'll say how it says in the code. Has to have a total of twenty feet on both sides with one side at a minimum of eight. So either you have eight and twelve, ten and ten. Whatever equates to twenty on both sides is what, is what the requirement is.
And what's the rear setback on the primary resident?
So pre nineteen eighty-seven, it was fifteen feet. After nineteen eighty-seven, it's twenty-five feet.
For the primary or for the ADU?
For the primary. And currently, and currently for ADUs, the same thing.
I guess that's what I was getting to at as well. Are, by putting it ten feet from the property line, is it going to run into the house we're allowing space in a ten thousand square foot property? I have not looked at this, but it'll work on a twelve, on a ten thousand?
Oh, sure.
I mean, we're giving them five feet on the, well, we're giving them fifteen feet more on the back.
Right.
Yeah, it would be much, yeah, it would be much. This will allow for more people. I mean, we can't evaluate every ten thousand square foot lot in the city, but this would allow for more opportunity because they don't have to meet that twenty-five foot setback, right?
I don't mind the ten, ten. I don't know if I'd mind it eight, eight.
Yeah. There are some, like California has, has state mandated that you're four, four and two-story. You can go up to two.
Now functionally, that would be hard to get your wheelbarrow and.
Yeah, so, yeah, that, that's, that's a little crazy on that one, but we'll get there.
Is there a height per story requirement? Are you going to get to that?
We actually have not changed it, so it's only allowed to be one story up to twenty feet. That's something that's already in there and isn't, we're not proposing to change it this time.
And it's up to twenty, thirty, twenty-five feet for the primary?
Twenty, uh, thirty-five, thirty-five feet for the primary.
I like the ten, ten. Two feet isn't a lot, however, if you're having new accessory dwelling unit, you're already getting close and, and encroaching on your neighbor, so I like the ten, ten.
And remind me, Zach, I'm going to go back to my original question. So the reason why I can't build a necessary dwelling unit on the corner lot ten feet off, I can't do that because of something else.
That's correct. Yeah, so the corner side yard setbacks require twenty-five feet or twenty feet.
But that's not a necessary dwelling, that is a necessary dwelling unit requirement? Or that's?
Yeah.
Primary is for everything. It's a good question. Is it everything on the property or just the primary dwelling?
Well, we're, but we're changing the offsets for the accessory dwelling unit. They're different from the primary, right?
All right.
So.
Does the primary still apply?
Give me one second. I did think of this.
That's a very good question.
Well, this goes along the same thing, maybe this, what you're trying to answer. Are we just showing interior lots here? Is this ten, ten that polite corners to?
Who comes, well.
You know what? I, I think I did miss something. So we can actually, I think i- if you decide to move forward and make a recommendation to the city council, that I would suggest adding that staff put in that it has to meet the corner side setback of twenty feet. That one, yeah, because I do see, I think that was one thing I did miss on this one. Because yeah, I wouldn't want it ten feet from the corner side yard.
Right, okay.
And accessory dwellings could be garages, right? So, so we could build a garage. Yeah, so that's a good catch.
Yep, good, yeah, very good catch.
And I'm not even sure, I don't even, I mean, I'm okay with it being even closer to the corner side yard, I think, than the primary resident. I don't, I don't, I don't know if I have an opinion, but I don't, I don't think it should be ten feet off.
Okay, then I would rather just leave it at twenty, just the twenty to, to maintain consistency. If and when, if you want to write this down, I would say, put it under K and a, a number three.
Under what?
Okay, so it's under, under section seventeen dot seven eight dot oh four oh. Letter, oh, I'm sorry, oh five oh, letter K, add number three must be.
What if we just forward a recommendation that, I mean, if we're going to approve this, what if we just forward a recommendation that we approve this with the addition to staff adding the.
Good idea.
The offset language.
I think we can, we can have discussion and I think.
Yeah.
Give it back to the staff and bring it back to us again.
Do you want to bring it back?
But let, we can decide that when we hear the rest of the.
Well, yeah, I'd like to hear the rest of it.
Okay.
I mean, I think I'm fine, for me personally, I think I'm fine, if this is the only issue we have, I'm fine just moving forward versus me.
And, okay.
That's why we vote.
I'm actually, I'm actually. There's actually not much else, the the only thing I really, uh the the major thing remove, other removal. Is making the the ADU match um the architectural style and materials and colors.
Why are we removing that?
Um to allow property owners to have flexibility in how they build their ADUs. Um if we force them to make it look exactly like it, or uh make them match those things. Could be cost prohibitive to add brick, like a brick facade. Um or, you know, a a historic look and feel to it, it could greatly exacerbate that cost.
Make it look.
I'm not saying it wouldn't be nice, but.
That's.
Well, I don't think you, i- i- if you word it right, you don't need to make it, say it had exact. But it still needs, it it still ought to be consistent.
Where's where's that change at?
It's um, letter N.
I know, I still, I I'd like more discussion, but I see what you're saying, but you could paint a facade that look like brick. I don't know, I have a friend in another city who built a big, huge red barn, bigger than his house as accessory dwelling and painted it red. And all the neighbors had problems with it.
Or it says compatible. Well, in N where uh Zach was talking about, and it's red lined out.
Okay, which?
The color blind, the color blind person uh may not see the same compatible colors as uh somebody else. Red barn color might go well with uh.
The brick house.
Pink house.
True.
So this is the current code.
I I think, I don't know, I I'm just trying to.
I think you modify the materials part, I think the exterior color at a minimum.
So so tell me the sack, so let's say I go and I apply for an ADU, you approve it cause you have to, and. Then I go, could I not just build a house made out of plywood?
Yeah.
No, because it would have to meet building code.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm asking, so it would have to meet the same building code the primary residents met.
No, it has to meet current building.
Well, that's what, that's okay, sure, current building code, so. In current building code, can I not just have a plywood exterior with painted with?
I'm assuming not, but I'm not a, I'm not a building code expert, I apologize, but I I'm assuming no.
I mean, I think that's where, um I mean, I have an issue and probably others is. Are we allowing somebody to build some atrocity in their backyard that's gonna just look terrible?
Or a nice, or, I mean, but even if it classes, it's a nicer. If it's nice, but it.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend that we go through the rest of this real quickly and decide if we wanna.
Well, really, all the.
This and have a a more in-depth discussion versus um another agenda item waiting on us.
Yeah, so th- the only other thing was I took out a little section of the short-term rentals not allowed because that section doesn't exist. So, that was it.
What, so what would that mean, that they would be allowed?
No, no, because A still exists, um I just am taking out reference to. Um, chapter seventeen dot two-three, which does not exist as a.
And A says will not be.
I think it's pretty clear, I'm okay with that.
And and it, we do have enforcement for uh not complying with with the zoning ordinance, I believe it's a class C misdemeanor. Um so you you already, yeah, you'd be in violation of that if you start doing it. Just that seventeen dot two-three had stricter.
So I think, I think that short-term.
No.
Description should be allowed to be stayed in.
I'm sorry?
You were talking about seventeen dot seventy-eight dot zero-nine-zero?
Uh huh.
What does short-term mean?
Well, his point is, so like you argue there's no definition, this isn't short-term.
Y- yeah, there is no short-term, um but we don't have a definition.
But I think we need to make one.
Yeah, that's on my, on my list.
So we have one.
Watch the city council.
We have, we have B as a short-term definition, thirty days. You struck it out, I think it needs to stay in there to define what short-term means.
Okay, yeah.
Where where you end up having.
Okay.
A B and B. Right?
No, you would, you wouldn't.
Why not?
Because uh it. Short-term rental is defined as anything less than thirty days. It's al- it's always been.
In code?
Um, not currently.
Well, we just struck it out, B is tells what short-term is, anything less than thirty days is short-term, and you can't do that.
Yeah, then that's fine, if that's, i- if you wanna keep that in, that's completely fine, we can do that. Just all, the only thing I would suggest is just to remove the uh.
The reference.
The reference, yeah, so short, short-term rental means, and then, or. Short-term rental is defined here as renting all or a portion of a property for less than thirty days at a time.
I I think that's worth having in there.
Yep.
Agreed.
I agree.
Okay.
Alright.
I think I'm fine moving forward with the motion, I have one more question, but I don't wanna ask it if others are not, and we're gonna revisit this anyway. Go ahead.
Well, my my find, findings are pretty easy, it just saying, you know, um furthers the objectives of the land. Uh modern income housing chapter, um. It's in harmony with objective eleven of the land use and urban design element, also of objective three of the neighborhood and neighborhoods and housing element. Um and reviewing and updating the setback requirements and other adjustment will further the city's priority of providing moderate income housing options for the city. So with that, we are recommending approval, uh we're make, eh, recommending that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council. Okay, questions?
I I think we have a corner lot discussion that's unresolved, I mean, it could easily be resolved, but it's resolved it.
I'm I'm resolved, I mean, I'm fine with that, as long as we just state the language, or just state that um that's added.
I would, I would prefer to table it and have the language clean that we're approving.
I would agree with.
We haven't resolved the setbacks and we haven't quite resolved what we all would like to see with the requirements of whether it matches the main house or not. So there's three things we haven't quite resolved, I have we resolved it?
So just so I understand, all three of you think we should table it, is that correct, without, yeah, without doing a vote, that's what you're saying.
Well, I think I would make a motion to table it. Uh to to have the recommendations, or and the things we've talked about improved in. Have this updated with those recommendations.
Okay, I don't know that there's any immediate uh requirement to get this to the city council, is there?
Um. So I have to report on the moderate income housing by August first, so um yes, but no. Um, I think just having this discussion is good enough, but um I don't know.
Let me ask my cha- let me ask my question before we move forward.
Let me, let me just state that there is a motion on.
Did you make a motion?
Well.
I thought he said I would, I would make a motion.
I I think he's, okay, there is a motion on.
You can't make a motion yet because we still have to have a public hearing.
Alright.
So.
Well, and 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 I'm fine with that, too.
You had a question, or you were gonna make comment?
Jimmy, she has to ask the point of order, though, then, w- we cannot table this without having the public comment, since it was on the agenda.
You, we can, we can have a public comment, we can table it.
I think you could, I think he, I don't know, what, Mark, what do you think?
Alright, we're gonna have a public comment.
Well, that's, and I'm fine with that.
And and your.
It says it.
Your motion is good, too.
That, I, so I guess his motion is.
Do you have something else?
Well, I'll withdraw my motion if we want to uh have the public comment.
Well, we can, there isn't gonna be a public comment because we won't get any, so, but we're gonna have one anyway.
Oh, goodness, so, did you withdraw your motion?
What's the question, Zach?
If he withdrew his motion.
You can leave it there.
We just have to deal with it.
Alright, I make a motion that we table this for now until the, that we have a clean.
There you go.
Okay.
Copy to approve.
Alright, do you have a comment?
My comment on the motion would be, I would ask that we do not table it. Until I can ask my question, just so I don't have to continue this to a third meeting.
No, we're, we're not gonna vote on the motion until we have a public comment, period.
Well, I think we have to move forward with the motion.
You have.
Well, that's why.
Unless it fails for a second, so if nobody seconds, then it will fail for a second, we have to deal with the motion.
Yeah, it's eight o'clock. Mister attorney? Can we go with a public comment and and leave the motion open until we're finished with our public comment, period?
Just do what Zach said and don't, nobody second it, and then it fails.
Make this really complicated.
I'm I'm sorry, that's Robert's rules.
And that's what we're supposed to do.
Yeah.
And and I'm, I I'm. I'm not gonna.
Alright, we've got a motion on the uh table. Is there a second? Is there a second to uh motion, I see no second, so motion fails.
There you go.
Jake, sorry, I didn't try to make this difficult. I just wanna make sure I don't come to another meeting and then ask a question, and then we have the whole thing. Can you just go through A real quick with me and help me understand what it means?
A, can can um.
I'll read it if you want, yes. The property owner which shall include title holders and contract purchasers must occupy either the principal unit or the ADU. I understand that part, as their permanent residence, I understand that part. And at no time receive rent for the unit occupied by the owner. But they receive rent from themselves, is that, that's what I don't understand.
So, it's like renting, um like, you couldn't rent out a room in your house. So if they're renting out the ADU, or let let's say they're, they have a three-bedroom house and are um have a detached ADU. And they only occupy one bedroom of the house, so they're renting out the ADU already. They could not um also rent out multiple rooms within their their principal dwelling.
So I have a furniture house that's doing that, but why?
Couldn't that be worded better?
Why?
That's, I mean, that's how it is in the code currently.
And, okay, I'm just gonna read it again, I'm sorry, I'm gonna read it aloud, just cause it makes me think better. The property only owner which shall include title holders and contract purchasers must occupy either the principal unit or the ADU. As their primary residence, and at no time receive rent for the uni- unit occupied by the owner.
Receive rent occupied by the owner.
Uh okay, yeah, sorry.
Not not pay rent, like a mortgage.
I get it, I under- I understand what it means, um.
Again, why?
But. I mean, it's it's in there now, right?
It's in there now.
It's in there now, so.
Just help me understand what we're trying to prevent. Help me understand what we're trying to prevent, like I said, I had, I know a single woman who has a house in Sugar House and rents out a room, cause her boys are both in college. And they do.
I don't know what the intent was on this one, but I didn't feel comfortable removing it at this time. Um I I'm trying to make small incremental changes on this AD ordinance, I'm not trying to writ large, remove all regulations. And let them go crazy.
Well, could there be better wording that s- says what you just explained?
Like I, like I said, I wasn't going through every line in the code. I I had certain objectives through the moderate income housing. Um re- um section of the general plan, and that's what I focused on.
Yes.
Yeah.
So going off of that question, would you, you asked about the language, cause the current code would say. Um, at no time receive rent for the owner occupied units. Do we, do you think that language is better than, and at no time receive rent for the unit occupied by the owner? No, no, I'm not saying it's better. I was just curious to see, cause it, cause it does currently state that, and at no time receive rent for the owner occupied units. I, no, I'm fine.
I guess maybe they're trying to not make it into apartment, is that why, they're trying to minimize the traffic in and out, and the cars in and out, and.
Additional, additional rentals, additional, yeah.
But they could do that with their primary residence if they didn't have an ADU.
Correct.
So just by building an ADU, now we've limited them, and we already are limiting them to not have their primary residence also rented out.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Um, at least for the time being, it's something, you know, unless you're you're really passionate about it. Um, I I I'm just making these incremental changes based on.
I just wanted to understand it.
Yeah.
I'm good now, thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna open up for a public comment, period. Any public comment?
Come on, Mark, do you wanna talk, you wanna speak to ADUs, either Mark.
I'm sure there's someone online.
Yeah.
They see no public comments, so close public comment, period.
Did you check mine, I mean, I was joking, but.
And bring it back to the commissioners for. Additional comments or. A motion, whatever that might be.
I move we table this until we have the, a clean copy with the corrections. And recommendations that we have talked about tonight.
In your uh motion, please, uh we we need you to include the what you want cleaned up.
Well, okay, specifically the. Comments that were made about the side yard setback and about the uh. The wording on short-term rental definition.
Wait, and, well, there was discussion on the.
Owner occupied?
That, if it needs to be.
I don't, I don't wanna die on that sword.
Okay. If it, the eight versus ten-foot side setbacks, and then the, if it needs to be. The same as existing primary residence, what's the wording?
Well, I, 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 okay, I was only worried about the corner.
Okay, and we'll assume all the other discussion, I, did we come to a conclusion on the eight versus ten side yard and?
That's, that's up to you guys, I thought we were good with ten, but I, I'm.
Okay with ten, I'm okay with ten, that's not an issue for me.
So I'm guessing we probably need you to restate the motion, right?
Or at least, yeah, at least finish it.
Since we had a conversation in the motion.
Well, I think, I think. I think what I heard, generally, the motion is to table it.
Do I need to cite specific?
Bring it back with a clean copy of uh discussion items that um. We recommended.
RE this, the uh. Corner yard setbacks and short-term rentals. I think that's the only two things that I heard.
We've got three staff that heard us discuss, so I think they can. Figure that out.
Do you want me to state?
That's fine, that's fine.
Alright, we got a motion, do we have a second? You guys are killing me.
This could go on all night. I could be okay with the several things we discussed, too, if it was just clear what we as a team decided on, I don't know if we were clear. But, so we could, I, in my mind, we could be done tonight, too, if we were clear, on if we all agree eight or ten foot, and if we agree, but. But that's not where we stand right now, we need a second. If we had a second, would we just be done tonight, or would you prefer?
Have to vote.
Oh, then we vote, and then, or would you prefer to have a little bit further discussion? Two people aren't comfortable with that, so we're not gonna get there tonight, okay, I second the motion.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. And is there any other discussion?
I, I do have just one thing, so I wanna discuss the motion just quickly. The only thing that we are recommending that they change is the side yards. And the.
Short-term rental.
Short-term rental, leave the language in for the short-term rental, we're leaving the ten-ten, is that correct? Is that the motion we are doing?
That's what I understood as part of the motion, okay.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
And are we commenting on the, we had a lot of discussion around whether it should match the primary resident or not, but we never really decided anything.
Yeah, so.
We kinda discussed it, but we never said yes, no.
Sorry, but.
In which, in which case, we can, we can um have the staff bring us back another copy, and we can discuss it again.
But then are we gonna edit it again, and then?
Maybe.
And then, are we back in the same boat? I'd just rather provide them with clear.
We have less than clear and we have a motion on the table and a second.
I know, I'm discussing the motion.
Okay.
I know.
Okay, Commissioner Henry.
Well, wait, well, hang on just a minute, we're discussing.
Well, we have a, no, we have a first and a second, we need to get the motion done.
Yeah, but we have a discussion on the motion. That's part of Robert's rules, we discuss the motion.
I omitted the, that particular thing, but his striking that if you, I would be open to amending the motion. To complicate things, or I can, well, we've already seconded it, so I can't withdraw.
And I, you don't worry about it, I think staff is listening.
We would have to vote, if you want to amend.
I will vote against this, the way it sits right now, if that's in there.
I, I mean, okay, since we're discussing the motion.
That part is.
I think there's two of us that are feel strong, if they feel like it should be tabled. And if we keep having discussion, I could get to a place where I think, yeah, sure.
I think there are three planning commissioners that aren't here that could have some good input for us.
So I think we just need to approve this motion if we want, because that's what's gonna happen tonight. Right? So, okay, so I'm, I'm good with your motion, I like your motion.
I have no more discussion. Alright, Zach, could you call question?
Question then.
Questions? Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Malkovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson.
No.
And Chair Hacker.
Yes.
Alright.
I understand where you're coming from.
Can we move on? Form-based code.
Okay, yeah, so this is. This is just a small discussion item introducing form-based code. Um, Mark Morris with Voda Landscape and Design, he's the consultant we've hired to work with us on doing a downtown form-based code. So I will let him come up. And, yeah. And I think you should be able to just log in.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Sorry, we made it so late.
You got there.
Went awry.
There it is, great. Okay. Um, good, my, as Zach mentioned, my name is Mark Morris, I'm the principal with Voda Landscape and Planning. We have just started working with planning staff in a, a small committee to. Um, commence the process of developing a form-based code for the city center area. Um, I've got a team of, uh, four of us, we're in downtown Salt Lake City, we do landscape architecture work and community planning. Um, in recent years, we've done form-based codes for several communities around you. Uh, we are just wrapping up a form-based code with Cottonwood Heights that they're hopefully adopting, uh, next month. Uh, in November, we helped Sunset City adopt a form-based code for a town center area. Sunset is, uh, in Davis County, uh, immediately adjacent to Hill Air Force Base. Uh, in twenty nineteen, we helped Midvale adopt a form-based code for their historic main street area. Uh, we are working with Downtown Redevelopment Services, Ben and his team worked with you. Uh, to develop a strategic plan that I believe was adopted just a few months ago, so. I know you know a bit about form-based code, what we wanted to do tonight was just to kind of introduce the project and talk through. Some frequently asked questions and make sure that you're at least familiar with, um, kind of the objectives of, of this project. With a form-based code, it's very much like learning a new language, so it's not expected that you get to, we'll say, you know. Immediate fluency with a form-based code, but at least understanding what are the main questions that are being asked. How is a form-based code different from traditional land use, uh, land use planning? Um, as the name implies, form-based code focuses on the form of development. So currently, use is kind of the first question that you have as a planning commission, which uses are permitted. A form-based code really focuses on what is the form of what is being proposed, where does the building sit? What are the heights, what are the setbacks, those, um, those types of questions? One of the questions that you'll also get is how does form-based code benefit current and future property owners? The big benefit for property owners is that form-based code allows a much more flexible approach to use. Building uses change frequently. Build, the buildings that we construct in a community, if we've done it right, the buildings stay for a long, long time. The uses are something that if a bill, if a, you know, a, a business owner, for whatever reason, decides to close their business or move elsewhere. Is that building reusable? Is what's being built something that is timeless and can, can be used for, you know, a myriad of, of uses? Um, we'll get into, um, non-conforming, uh, uh, properties. Um, later on in this process, but the intent is to make sure that you understand why. What are the main questions of a form-based code and why, why is it that the community would benefit from that change? Um, many cities in Utah are using form-based code. Uh, form-based code as a concept has really only been around about twenty-five years. The first form-based code was adopted in Florida in the late nineties and it's spread to other communities all across the, all across the country. Uh, Salt Lake City was the first in the state to adopt a form-based code, so their first form-based code area is nearing twenty years of, of application. Um, every city that's adopted form-based codes. They, they've changed that code, it's not like it's adopted and then it isn't revised. Every city kind of goes through iterations of that, of that form-based code. Um, if you have questions as we go along, by all means, um, let me know. So with conventional zoning, as I'm sure you are aware, there are certain questions that are asked. Whether the, the use is compatible with the neighborhood. There are a lot of questions that really are not asked or that the city really doesn't have any control over. So with a form-based code, with that focus on physical form. The intent is that the applications that you get and the development that you get is far more predictable. And so this image that you see on the right, this is from the, uh, Midvale Form-Based Code that I mentioned. One of the intentions with that form-based code was to make sure that as development came along. The historic character of Midvale's main street was supported, it was expanded. The things that the community really liked about their main street remained and anything new coming along didn't, uh, didn't take away from that. So the intention again is predictability. And when we look at an area, the context is really what drives a lot of the choices that we make as we're developing.
What did you say the intention was? I didn't hear that.
No, sorry.
You said the intention is, and I, I just didn't hear what you said.
Oh, the intention is to make the development that you're getting more predictable. That when someone comes in the door with an application, you have more understanding and more predictability of, of what you're going to get. And that's through a number of mechanisms, but the intention or the, the overall context of the neighborhood. That, that the code is being applied to, that is what is gonna drive a lot of those, uh, those decisions. So the form-based code that is applied to the city center area, it's not one that you would then start applying to other parts of the city. You would develop a form-based code specific to the context of that, of that community. Typically, cities will start with a small area that they're applying form-based code. And when you feel comfortable with it and you're seeing that predictability. Cities will then look at other parts of the city and how they could apply a form-based code to it. Uh, the form-based code is usually applied to places that are, um, primed for redevelopment. Typically, they're in commercial or mixed-use areas. A form-based code is rarely, if ever, applied to an existing single-family neighborhood. Where you have a neighborhood that doesn't change a lot, there really isn't any, uh, demand or need to apply a form-based code to a neighborhood like that. So with this particular project, this is very typical to say, we have a city center district. That we would like to have some predictability, implementation of goals. Those are the types of neighborhoods that you might, um, you might spread that form-based code approach to. So this graphic that you're looking at is, is hopefully helping to clarify what form is versus style. So on the left, we have a bunch of parameters that would be those that might be regulated in a form-based code. So we're looking at, uh, build two zones, setbacks, uh, roof type, facade articulation. Uh, building and floor heights, minimum occupied space. Those are all parameters that a form-based code would, would regulate. None of those are talking about architectural style. The form-based code are not architectural guidelines, they're not something that is deciding, here is the style of the city center area. That's, that's something that gives property owners flexibility, as long as they meet the requirements of the form-based code. That architectural style can be, uh, whatever it is that they decide they would like to use. So on the right, you can see, uh, the bottom, we have two parcels that are, uh, basically, basically that's the same parcel. Developed with two very different types of development, but would both meet, uh, requirements of a form-based code. So the, the style of the building can be something wildly different. If someone likes modern architecture, they can do that, so long as it, uh, meets that. Form-based code. Um, so the end product that will produce, these are not architectural guidelines. There is discussion of materials and materiality, but it doesn't give that specific of, uh, guidance. In the form-based code. One question that you may get from your constituents is why, why, why use a form-based code? The intent of a form-based code is really to implement community goals. Where you have a general plan, you have plans around a city center. Um, all of those, those things are really the jumping off point, where we gather goals that are on the books for the city, for the city center district. And how do we make sure that public investments and private investments are both working towards achieving those goals? So public aspects, we're talking about, uh, investment in public infrastructure. Private aspects, of course, development of, um, private, private property within this district. And how does that help us to achieve goals for, uh, for, for this specific area? What we've got here, and we'll provide all of these slides with you, you can read through these at your leisure. These are goals that we've pulled from existing documents, um, for the city center district. Some of these come from the strategic plan that was recently adopted, some come from the general plan. The general plan has plenty of information about citywide goals. The pulling, pulling out the parts that are specifically about the city center. What are the things that the community has said we want to accomplish with the city center, uh, district? So the intent again is to make sure that we're not reinventing the wheel here, developing a form-based code is not a revisioning. We're not going back to decide, okay, should we change these goals again? We're really saying, these are the goals that are on the books, how do we make sure that the code supports the achievement of those, of those goals? Um, Zach also provided us, um, some of the U R A objectives from twenty sixteen. All of these, again, are things that are on the books today, and I'd say they're pretty consistent from one document to the next. The desire to create a more walkable center, create, you know, a mixed use, a gathering place for the city. All of those things, I think, are pretty, pretty consistent from, from one document to the next, as far as what you have, uh, what you have adopted. Um, any, any questions about any of that so far? Yes?
Well, I guess, we're talking about this for the downtown area, and I thought one of the objectives in that downtown area was to have it be. I don't know if I wanna say a specific architectural style or at least consistent. With some of the heritage architecture that was there. And what I just heard you say is that this would not control any of that.
Correct, it does not prescribe specific architectural styles. It would have consistent heights and consistent setbacks, but the architectural style is not controlled by a form-based code.
Does that meet the objectives for this?
Yeah, so it, just because, just because, so when we speak about architectural style, that's different than. Kind of like your traditional neighborhood type look and feel and, and what a district feels like. So the, the porosity, you know, how many windows and what it looks like on the front, um, things like that. Uh, architectural style, you're talking about like modernism or, um, brutalism or, uh, art deco. Um, those kind of things, so we're not prescribing that everything in the downtown shall look like art deco, right? But the spacing, you know, spacing of windows, um, uh, floor heights and, um. Openings on the ground floors, things like that will lend itself to. That look of the historic downtown. Um, I encourage, I, I encourage you to go down to Midvale's Main Street because they have the same thing going on. Which also does not prescribe a style, but you can see what is being built there. And, and see that it is still feeling and looking and acting like. What's been there prior.
I'm not trying to be critical of what I just heard you say, kinda sound like you're parsing the words a little bit. That if you had all those different styles together, you may end up with just a hodgepodge look, even if you. And maybe I'm not understanding what this form-based code controls well enough yet, hasn't sunk in.
And you're not supposed to yet, this is just an intro. Um, you, you will, there will be lots of opportunity to go through this. Rapidly, um, but yeah, so there, there's differences, there's, and, and, and am I explaining it correctly, Mark, to a degree that, yeah? The difference between architectural style and kind of what we're controlling for.
Correct, correct, and I think with most, um, most town center or, you know, historic centers. There's always gonna be a mix of architectural styles, but I think the form-based code intends, as Zach pointed out. To make it feel like it still is cohesive, so we're not gonna have wild differentiations in heights and setbacks and things like that. But the style of the architecture may, may vary, so just like this building that we're in, this is a very modern, contemporary building. The intent is to make sure that the heights and the, the kind of access, uh, to those buildings is consistent. So we're not trying to pretend like the buildings are a hundred years old, but at least. The, the setting and the way that the, the buildings address the street are, are consistent. But we can get into more of that as, as we go on, but just, just to make sure you understand. At, in the end, there are not architectural guidelines that say, okay, it has to be, it has to be exactly this way as far as the style goes.
Can you, can you explain on a high level, just cuz I don't think I understand? So we have the MCCD zone.
Correct.
And we're proposing that this would be applied to only a portion of that? Or would it take the place of the zone? I guess that's not what I, I guess I, I'm not understanding that.
The second one that you described, this would replace the MCCD.
In its entirety?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, I think there were, Zach, maybe two parcels that we had.
I just thought there was a previous slide that showed, that said something like, if you go back another slide. It said, propose form-based code boundary for Murray City Center, so that is the boundary currently of the MCCD?
No, so this.
Oh, so we would change the boundaries of the new?
Yeah, there will be some small modifications, and, and those would go to probably, um, some other zoning district.
Okay, so the MCCD zone would go away.
Correct.
It would be replaced with something that we, I don't know how these are called. Form-based code, okay. The form base, was it like the form-based code for the Murray City Center?
It would just be called the city center.
And, and then that zone goes away, the properties that are not in this, that were formerly MCCD would, we would rezone something else.
Yeah, so for, for example, if I could. Like as an example, so you can see here on the right-hand side of your screen on Center Street. Um, the, the north-south street. um, the, the north-south street, kind of in the middle of the page. Um, thank you. Um, those currently are in the M C C D. And so I could, I could logically see those going back to like R one eight, which is what is across the street.
Okay.
Yeah. Which those are all single-family homes already. So, um, it, it wouldn't be that different to transition those.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah.
What was happening?
Yeah. And, and that's usually, that's where we start with kind of establishing the boundary of what the form-based code would be applied to. So what we started with was, okay, here's the M C C D zone. Working with staff, we said, okay, does it make sense to include all of these? Or there are some like those that Zach pointed out that might not, you, you might not want to apply the, the form-based code to them.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead. This, this city center area and what you're talking about is, is consistent with the general plan now?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely. We wouldn't be moving forward without general plan support.
So these, these that you see under, under the, um, C general plan, 2017, 2022, this is where we've pulled some of those key initiatives that were called out, specifically as those that would be applied to the city center district. So again, we're not looking to change any of those initiatives or any of those objectives, but really to say, how can we make sure that the code supports these objectives that the city has, has established? We pulled out those specifically about land use, urban design, transportation, economic development. There are certainly others, um, in the general plan, but those are the ones that would be most relevant to, to what we're, what we're talking about with a form-based code. I've got a couple of case studies we can, we can talk through. There are some similarities, obviously some differences. The boundary that you see here, this is the form-based code for the Midvale, um, Main Street code. You can see the, the red area in that north-south, that's the historic Main Street area. But they definitely wanted to have the code applied to a larger area than what was really considered their historic Main Street, that they recognized that there were other, um, other corridors through the area that they wanted to make sure that development was, was consistent. Um, you can see, and we'll, we'll talk about this specifically with, um, your city center area. You can see the different colors on there. Um, within a form-based code, you develop what are called form districts. Really realizing that one consistent height or one consistent requirement across the entire area isn't necessarily um, desired. And so there is some fine, you can kind of get a little bit more fine-grained with those requirements um, within, uh, within a form-based code. It's not a one-size, not a one-size fits all. Um, here's another, uh, we did not develop this code, but another in, um, uh, Main Street Bountiful, where they had some historic buildings, but a lot of, um, kind of, uh, broken teeth, as it were, along their main street. Looking at how do they make sure that the development, uh, that comes into their historic Main Street was consistent with, um, what, what they wanted to, to preserve and support within the city center area. Uh, the form district that I mentioned, we've been working, uh, again with staff to get into a little bit finer, finer-grain detail with the form-based code. So here's a map that shows that, um, area that the form-based code is proposed to apply to. What we've done is divided it into five, uh, five different form districts. And the form district will be the most close parallel that you'll see to a zone. When someone walks in the door and they say, what zone am I in? We have, we have an understanding of, you know, R one eight and C one and all of those zones. The form districts of the form-based code will be separate from all of that. But that's the closest parallel that someone might, um, might understand. And the five form districts, we won't get into all the details, um, on, on each of these tonight. But really to recognize that you have different sub-districts in the city center area where we might want to have different parameters. So you can see the orange along State Street, having a consistent, uh, form applied all along State Street. The purple area in the center, we call Civic Center, which is all the parcels kind of around this building where we've got kind of the, the city hall as a, as a community hub. The green along, uh, forty-eight-hundred commercial of, of kind of a, a specific, if not smaller scale than along State Street. Um, and then the T N district, that we're kind of calling a, a transit neighborhood where it may actually make sense to have taller, higher, uh, building limits in that area where you have closer proximity to transit service. And also the natural topography of the city center district might lend itself well to having higher buildings that would have less impact on the surrounding neighborhoods merely because of where they're located on, on the natural geography of the site. We'll come back with more information about these form districts as we develop them, but I wanted to introduce that concept that the for, form-based code is filled with tables that have lots of parameters for each of these form districts. The form district is the thing that is going to, you know, that's the first column that you're going to look at with each of these, um, he, each of these form districts. So that, again, you, just to kind of introduce a bit of vocabulary to you, that form district, you'll talk about a lot. Which form district are we, are we talking about? Um, the final thing I wanted to introduce as part of this process, we're developing a prototype. And the prototype is, is really just an example parcel within the city center district. And, and what the intent of the prototype is, is that this document will live on, that you can refer to during discussions. Staff might bring you a snippet from the prototype to show, here is, here's what that looks like on the parcel. The prototype really is a graphic representation of the parameters as, you know, as the form-based code, um, outlines them. So the form-based code itself, the entire document is meant to have a lot of graphic details so that you can understand exactly what the parameter is when we talk about minimum occupied space of a building, the build-two zone of a building. You can refer to the prototype to really understand what is it, what is it that we're, we have, we're, we're discussing? The, yeah.
So, so the code will reference the prototype? Is that how that works?
The code won't necessarily reference the prototype, but the prototype is a tool that you can use to say, okay, you know, in the prototype, it's going to show us graphically, what is that, what does that look like?
In the code.
Correct.
I got it.
Correct. And the prototype, we chose a parcel, um, with the help of staff. This is the Wells Fargo on Vine Street. Um, we like to choose one that's on a corner just because corners are tricky, as you have talked about tonight. Um, having a prototype that kind of shows, okay, if this parcel were to redevelop, what would that, what would that look like? What would the parameters be for, for that particular, particular parcel? As you're talking with constituents, if the topic of form-based code comes up, it should be clear that this is only implemented when someone comes in and wants to redevelop their parcel. There's no, there's no, um, we're not trying to kick any businesses out that are currently in the city, city center district. This is really something that will only be, um, implemented as, as redevelopment comes along. Um, there are certain triggers within a form-based code that if an existing business comes in and tries to expand past one of those triggers, that they would be required to come into compliance with the form-based code. But those triggers are set by you, the city. And so you can determine what are, what are triggers that make sense for, uh, for this particular, uh, particular area. Um, the, the prototype itself is pretty simple, again, where it's got simple graphics that kind of show, okay, when we're talking facade articulation, what does that really mean? What are the things that we're, that we're talking about? Again, this is meant to be a tool that you can reference, um, for years into the future to really understand, okay, staff has come to us with the, the deviation from the code or there's some dispute over what, what needs to be required. The, the prototype is meant to show, okay, one specific parcel in the city, here's how it might be, might be applied. Questions about, about any of that? Um, the, the prototype, we've only, we've only just begun developing that. We'll be developing that as the code, um, as the code progresses. Um, but again, when we come back with, um, more information about the form-based code, we'll show in the prototype, here's what that really means, where the code itself will have some tables, you know, a table, everyone's eyes are just going to glaze over. We want to make sure that there's an understanding of what is that parameter requirement and why do we want to do that? What are the things that are going to benefit from, from that requirement?
Would you go back to your page that had that, uh, facade articulation on it?
Uh, sure.
So potentially you're saying that, that you would have some requirements in there for that facade articulation?
Uh, correct, correct. And these are not developed yet for your form-based code yet.
Understand, I just.
Yeah.
Want to understand what all we're trying to control here and how. Okay. Thank you.
Sure. It, it does talk about use. Use is not unaddressed. It's just a much more flexible approach. So there is a list of uses that are never allowed. Uh, we just talked about this the other day with staff. So there's a, there's a list of uses that you can say not allowed in this area at all. The use, when we come back to talk about use, a lot of the use discussion is really focused on what is appropriate on the ground floor of a building in the city center and what is appropriate on an upper floor. But again, it's a lot more flexible than your current code, where there's a lot more, again, leeway for a property owner to propose, uh, use.
So this is what you've mentioned to us before about getting rid of the permitted uses and conditional uses. This would replace all of that?
No, not, not, not really. So what I mentioned is there's a standard land use code, which is a book about this thick that was written in the sixties that, um, outlines every possible use you could think of in the sixties. Um, doesn't address things that have happened post-sixties. So that's what I talk about, streamlining that. We would never get rid of permitted and conditional uses. Um, it would be, it would be consolidating that down to general categories instead of something like, you know, like a, like a metal manufacturing or a, like a.
Be in conjunction with this.
This, um, I'm anticipating, and I've talked kind of to the steering committee about this being the first zone where we step away from the standard land use code. Um, so where it's really general broad categories instead of numbered list of, of, of use, uses.
So you're saying there would still be some categories that are permitted and some that are.
Oh, of course. So like, like, like Mark was saying, like, what's appropriate on the ground floor? Well, you know, maybe commercial in some of those zones is what's permitted on the ground floor. But then, or, or sorry, in the district, I should say, sorry. Um, and then in another district, well, residential's permitted on the ground floor, where we want more of a residential feel in, in, in the downtown, right? Um, and so it's more broad-based category, you know, retail, commercial, um, and, uh, office uses and then narrowing or broadening that out. Not broadening, narrowing it down into some other specific uses like, um, I think we can confidently say that we've, we do have a list of prohibited uses, like, um, like auto sales, right? We don't want auto sales in the downtown. Um, that's one of our prohibited um, uses there.
But they're going to be very broad. You're saying like retail sales would be one of the permitted uses?
Y- yes, but there will be some, and then there will be, I, I think it's like a paragraph or so that kind of explains what retail sales really encompasses.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty specifically defined, but it's a lot, uh, again, a lot more broad. You can say, okay, here, here are lists of what those retail uses might be. But things I would say that are hot-button topics, you know, we're talking vape shops and check cashing and the things that always are kind of an issue. Those are pretty clearly spelled out to say, okay, here's what's permitted and not permitted and where. There's still a list of uses not permitted in this, in this district, full stop. So when we get into that a little bit more, we can kind of talk about that use approach, but it is definitely considered. It's just considered in a different, in a different way. Great. Yeah. What else?
I, this question's not for you, it's for Zach, but why have we excluded the Arlington property to the south and, and the one next to it?
That's a gr- what? Sure. David wants answers.
Are you okay with me answering that one, Jake?
Go ahead.
So the reason that we, because we discussed this as a steering committee, and so a big part of the reason we excluded the Arlington is that there's already development agreement in place and we didn't want to basically upend the zoning under them when they've already gone so far in the process.
But are, are, but aren't we doing away with the M C C D zone? So aren't we doing that no matter what?
Not.
Or am I confused?
Not necessarily. That's still TBD. So, I mean, before this gets adopted, we will figure that out. But we have to think about what that is. There might be the instance where the Arlington remains in the M C C D for a portion until it's, until it's entitled. And then it might go into another zoning district of some, some kind.
Cause either we keep the M C C D zone, if I'm, if this is correct, we keep it and we allow them to stay in a little teeny M C C D zone, which doesn't make any sense. Or we zone them commercial, which probably would, that, that's what we, they would be, I'm guessing, because that's the surrounding property. Or they have to be in this forum district or something else.
Right.
It's changing no matter what.
My initial thought, and this has not been said out loud, so this is the first time I'm saying it out loud. My initial thought is potentially like the C M U zone, which is what the Best Buy property is to the south. Um, I could see that being more applicable because that would allow for about the same uh, type and intensity that we're looking in that area. Um, and allowable uses, and it would be kind of streamlined from on the other side of the park where, where Best Buy and everything already is. So it would provide kind of a nice transition. Again, that hasn't been decided or discussed. Um, and you guys would see that and a recommendation would be made with that before anything happens officially.
If we left it in the, this is my, my last thing, we don't even continue to discuss this because it's late, but if we left it in this forum-based district, wouldn't they be grandfathered in with what their plans currently have submitted to the city?
No, because they're not entitled yet.
I see.
So you guys have not seen their proposal yet, that, as the land use authority?
But we would before, this is, I mean, I'm assuming this isn't happening next week.
This is happening by the end of the year.
Okay.
Um, so this is happening by the end of the year. Um, the latest updates we have and, um, is that uh, Triumph won't be coming forward until probably spring.
Better hurry.
So that's, that's why we're kind of, that's why we're kind of in that.
And you're saying that if we changed that area to the form-based, this, or, or form-based
Yeah.
Code? You can't make it compatible with what they're already planning to do? Or it just ends up being a different set of requirements?
It could be, yeah, it could be an entirely different set of requirements based on what specifically the, the, that boulevard district would include, um, based on what, um, yeah. So, uh, there, there's the potential that it could have a more significant impact on their development agreement and their, uh, that they've done with the R D A. Um, so that's just kind of the, the route we're trying to take, is to not affect that to a substantial degree.
Great. Any other, any other questions?
Make the downtown just hodgepodge.
This won't create hodgepodge downtown.
Zoning.
I said I wasn't going to say anything else. You're looking at me like I should.
Looking down the line here.
You said you'd provide these slides?
Indeed, indeed. Zach, yeah, Zach has these and we'll, we'll distribute those. But again, you're not, you're not expected. But again, you're not, you're not expected to, to know everything. It's really just to introduce, here are some, some broad, broad ideas. We'll be back with more, more detail to, to talk through. Also, we have, we, we did a random, kind of random drawing and so on the steering committee, we have Michael Richards as a planning commissioner on the steering committee. We just randomly picked, put it into Excel, did a randomize. We also have Adam Hawk, the city council person, and Diane Turner on the, on the steering committee for these as well. So, so that we can help. We have another person outside of just staff that can kind of help explain this a little bit as well as they're learning.
So I'm waiting, I guess I'm still waiting to fully understand how it's more predictable. And I, like I said, it like oversimplifies a little bit. What I've heard you say is, I know if there's going to be an RV and a bus parked in the space or if it's going to be too little bikes, because I have an idea of the form.
I can, I can send out some videos of form-based codes, just some to, to try to help explain some of that and how that works. I'll, I'll try to find some.
Knowing the space is definitely more helpful. I think whenever we bring up this area, there's a group that goes, yeah, let's build this and this and this, and the other group comes in and says, preserve. And so I think those two arguments need to be taken into consideration so this can.
It's already, so that's part of, that's one of the things, right, is that's already been asked and answered. We have the guiding vision. This is not visioning. This is the nitty-gritty details. Not whether preserve or not preserve. Whether it's preserved or not preserved is for somebody else.
I, I understand, but I'm just hoping this works this time. Like you've said, there's 64 years of record showing we've talked about developing this area.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking for what is better about this that'll help us move forward, because we need to move forward.
Sure. And I, I think that's a good thing to think about. Zach mentioned a little field trip to Midvale's Main Street. It might be worth next time you're close by. They were in the same place five, six years ago where they'd been talking about something happening for, for decades. The city got together, they created a vision, the RDA, you know, spent, you know, a bunch of time making sure they have the money to do it, to invest. And you go there today and, and it's wild how much is being built on their, on their main street. And it feels very cohesive. It feels like it fits in with the historic buildings. Like it really is accomplishing what they hoped to accomplish. So it might be worth just swinging by there someday just to.
I've driven back and forth through, there's a little Mexican restaurant we like to eat in. It's a neat, open area.
Yeah.
The one with the mural on the sign in the grocery store, I don't know the name. Piñatas in the grocery store.
Yeah. So, and again, we'll come back with more information, but again, the intent is that it's more predictable. You know what's going to happen. We can't guarantee that, okay, all this development is going to flood in because that's dependent on all kinds of economic conditions. But at least we know when something comes along and somebody says, we want to develop, you have code in place that you know what to expect that would happen there. Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for the time.
We'll continue to, to look at updates from, from you and your team. And I think maybe we were just talking about some, perhaps some examples of where commissioners could go and look at things that have happened in the past or recent to see what it really could look like. It's probably a little bit hard if you don't realize what it looked like previously, but that might help some. So. All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll keep looking. Anything else, Zach? Announcements, questions, next meeting?
Yeah, just, we're planning on having one on the first. Not a lot of items, but heavy. So.
Okay, all right. Heavy. What's the heavy one?
You know the heavy one.
Do you know the heavy one? Galleria? Okay, now it's on the public record. Sorry. Okay. No other agenda items. Ask for a motion to close the meeting.
Motion to adjourn at eight forty-eight PM.
Second. Second.